I want to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska Governing Body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. The presenter shall approach the podium, save your name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves their right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Beck, here.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt. Hans.
Here. First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of December 5th, 2017.
Salute.
Okay. We have a motion and a second is ready for discussion. Sign down, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Hans, motion here.
Next item is the consent agenda. Second. We have a motion and a second, is there anything to discuss? Sign down, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Hans, motion here.
Our next item, number seven, is a public hearing. 7:00 PM, consideration of the preliminary plat discussion of draft subdivision improvement agreement and draft compliance observation agreement for Shoal Creek addition. Did you want to start?
Ed here. Ed wanted to start with that.
Hey, Ed? Would you join us for a second?
No, Ed was going this way.
Do you want to take this?
I can get it started.
Okay.
This is the preliminary plat consideration for a subdivision known as Shoal Creek addition. It was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting. And I see that Ed Gonzalez has joined us, so I'll turn it over to him to finish you guys up here real quick.
All right. Good evening, council. This is a major subdivision application to develop a tract of land which is composed of a portion of Lot 1, Seward Middle School addition, and a portion of Plum Creek Park addition. This initiated with the school district deciding to sell a portion of land for development. The applicant of the subdivision is Parer 72 LLC and Robert Benish, and the professional design firm of Olson and Associates. The subdivision involves 22 single-family residential lots with two additional outlots. The subject area is currently located in city limits and is currently located in two zoning districts. R1 on Rainbow Avenue, which is urban residential, single-family district, low density, and on Parkview, R4, urban residential, multifamily district, high density. The developer is planning to apply to rezone. Subject areas is R3, urban residential district, mixed density. And I'll talk about that a little bit here at the end. The subdivision will involve extending city utilities and new public streets connecting the dead ends of Rainbow Avenue and Parkview Drive, including a cul-de-sac and new storm sewer facilities. The developer also requested that the city sell attractive land from Plum Creek Park, which amounted to approximately 0.142 acres, which would help create more uniform parcel layout. City Park Recreation and Golf Director Bob Corr had no concerns with the sale of that tract of land, and city council approved that sale previously. City Electric Superintendent Larry Ruther and City Street Transportation Superintendent Mel Aldrich report they are satisfied with the submitted plans for their respective utilities. City Water, Wastewater Superintendent Tim Richdig reports that he is requiring that an eight-inch water main be installed to match the existing eight-inch water mains that currently dead-end at the dead ends. The developers is proposing six-inch water mains, and that issue's been addressed in the pending subdivision agreement. Olson and Associates staff have met with city staff to research the drainage of storm water from the subdivision and adjacent properties to work on designing the best storm water management system for this location. And I'll let the engineer speak more in detail to that. The subdivision was plotted to cut out a tract of land 15 foot wide, located in the northwest area, which will remain Seward Middle School property and serve as a public pedestrian access/sidewalk to connect the subdivision and adjacent subdivisions to the middle school. And the school district will be responsible to maintain that access and sidewalks. Snow removal, snow removal being the main thing. The developer also indicated an interest in being a good neighbor to existing adjacent property owners by plating an outlaw to reserve some existing established pine trees in the area southeast corner of the subdivision. At that time, the city expressed interest in planning for a public pedestrian access/sidewalk to connect the subdivision and adjacent subdivisions to the existing adjacent public park and to improve the overall pedestrian network between adjacent subdivisions and city parks, as well as to discourage pedestrian traffic trespassing in between private properties to access the parks. Plum Creek Park, the sports complex, and the Seward Bike Trail are destination public parks which host multiple annual events that draw very large attendance. The developers indicated they are willing to donate an outlaw to the city to meet this requirement, and it has also been addressed in the pending subdivision agreement. The city's Unified Land Development Ordinance, Article 41, Public Improvements and Infrastructure, Parks and Public Facilities, addresses that required open space and land donation. The subdivision partly conforms to the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map with the single-family residential use type. However, the rezoning to R3, urban residential, mixed density, does not conform to the current future land use map, which would require an amendment to that future land use map, changing the area to mixed density residential. Otherwise, the plat conforms to the requirements of the city's Unified Land Development Ordinance, reference major subdivision application requirements. A notice that the public hearing was published, mailed to neighboring property owners, and the subject property was posted. The city Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter December 11th. The Planning Commission recommended approval, the preliminary plat, the final plat, and the amendment to the comprehensive plan and future land use map by majority vote. The Planning Commission recommended to revise the subdivision agreement to include language reference to the installation of public sidewalks after the subdivision construction is complete. And the schedule of installing said sidewalks when lots remain unsold and vacant. Subsection A and B were added to item 5 of the subdivision agreement to address this recommendation. During the Planning Commission meeting, there was some question as to the current zoning of the area and the procedural process of presenting and approving the rezoning before the final plat can be properly approved. As mentioned previously, the developer planned on applying to rezone the area at next month's Planning Commission and City Council meetings. However, after discussing the matter with the city's Comprehensive Plan Update and Unified Land Development Ordinance consulting firm, it has been decided to table the final plat application at this time and only proceed with the preliminary plat application tonight. The rezon application, final plat, will start fresh at the January 8th, 2018 Planning Commission and January 16th, 2018 City Council meetings. Answer any questions you may have.
Well, the council thinks about that. It is a public hearing, so I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on item number seven? See, yes.
Are you just talking here?
No, we, yeah, sorry. Yeah, open the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Dwayne Minor, 2030 Rainbow Avenue. I'm the last house and where the outlaw is. The sidewalk was sprung on, at least me, last week, and I didn't have much time to think about it. And I think it's fine. I guess my, I would request that when that sidewalk's designed, that consideration's given for the landowners next to it. It doesn't affect me as much because of the gap with the trees, but the next landowner is going to have a lot that's got a public sidewalk right next to it. And it certainly affects their privacy and kind of the security of that area. I don't know if there's another sidewalk that runs quite like that in town, but anyway, it's just a concern I have being right adjacent.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on item number seven? Welcome.
I'm, my name is Ryan Ideas. I'm at 1990 Rainbow Avenue. My question, and it might have been solved where Ed was talking about the zoning being tabled. I've got the mailing that I got for all this, and the zoning was not very clearly described. There was no about the zoning to R3, which is going to allow for the multi-use family, which could allow for townhomes and the building of duplexes. That's something that I don't know about the rest of the neighborhood, but I think that everybody should know that that's an option that could be there in the future if these lots don't sell and somebody else were to buy them and build them. So I think it should be made more clear to the neighborhood that that's a possibility.
Okay.
That's all, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Ed, do you have your book, or can you go grab it real quick?
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't want Mr. Ideas to leave with the wrong impression of what's going to be available. I know we brought it, were you at the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I was.
And that was a point of clarification even after that that people followed up with. So I want Ed to bring his planning book to me real quick. I'll just walk through this so that we're clear what is and isn't allowed in this area. Because it was a point of, I wouldn't say contention, but of consideration by the Planning Commission and a lot of the citizens that attended that.
The R3 zoning would allow single-family detached, single-family attached, duplex, two-family, townhouses, multiple-family, which is an apartment complex, only under a special use permit.
Okay. Now, Ed, can you also list the permitted uses under R1, which is what, like, Rainbow is currently zoned at?
Right. R1, single-family detached, they're all the same except single-family attached duplex is permitted. A two-family is allowed under a special use permit. Townhouses are not allowed. Multi-family is not allowed under R1.
And so it took us a while. We had to go through all these definitions. But the last one that is a permitted use, what was that one?
A duplex?
A duplex. And also a single-family attached. Now, single-family attached is essentially a two-house townhouse. Currently, like, what's being built up on North Columbia, one big lot, split down the middle, two attached ones. Those could be built on R1 right now under current zoning. So we just want to make sure that everybody understands what is and isn't allowed now, so that if something even came in under R1, they're like, well, what's this combined building coming in for? And so we want to be very clear to people what is and isn't. If anybody has any confusion on that, please let us know, because we'll email a copy of this out to people so they can see what's allowed. Because we could stick in a number of those types of units, and they look basically like a two-unit townhouse.
Correct.
Thanks, Ed. Let me finish up the public hearing, our public comment portion. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on this item? Yeah, please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Peery, 2000 Rainbow. In looking at the map as it came out, it, I'm sure there's been a lot of thought. You've got developers that spend a lot more time on this than I do. But it really appears that it was an effort to get as many units in there as possible. And I know there was previous ideas drawn up before the school was in there. And obviously, there's concern on my part with, you know, the R3 and what that could potentially allow for. But it seems like there would be better use for growth in Seward and what needs are by being able to scale down the number of lots and how they're put in there and what's available then for public and continuing growth. Because I want Seward to grow. I've spent my entire life here. Outside of nine months I've lived in Seward, so I want to see it continue to grow. But I think it could be done with fewer than 22 lots in that area.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on item number seven? Seeing no one else, I'll get and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Sid?
Ed, so just to clarify, the biggest difference with the R3 would be like an apartment-type structure, right? Because then you say the R1 does allow for like a duplex or a two-family attached.
Correct. The multiple-family would be an apartment complex, two-story, three-story. And that would be allowed in the R3, but only under a special use permit, which they would have to apply if you're in front of Planning Commission, City Council for that special use permit application.
Dylan?
So if they're planning 22 single-family homes, then the reasoning for doing the zoning is, should they not sell? Then they would sell to a different developer? What's their reasoning behind wanting this changed?
Rezoning to an R3 reduces the setbacks, the buildable area on the lots. It reduces the front yard setback to 25 instead of 30, and the side yard setbacks down to 5 instead of 7 and 1/2 feet. So it makes them more dense. The houses will be closer together.
So they can't do 22 unless they go to R3?
That would be a fair statement.
How many could they do in R1?
Have to sit down and do the calculations. The minimum lot requirements would get bigger. Your minimum lot width would be 75 in a R1, be 60 in a R2, and gets down to 55 in a R3.
So it would be a bit of a difference from everything else on Star Street, Rainbow, and all those other, which is R1?
Star Street is R4.
Is R4.
Which has the five-foot side yard setbacks already. Parkview is R4 currently.
Okay.
Rainbow is R1 with the larger setbacks.
Okay. I'm just trying to, when I think of how those streets all look, is I want to see how that's going to fit in as far as the look of the houses. Because even in the new part of Web 4, though, some of those houses are closer together.
Right. And you should have a copy of the zoning map in your package. Current zoning map.
Where on the phone? Is the developer yourself?
The professional design rep is.
Is it a deal breaker for them if they can't do 22?
Yeah, that's them.
I don't know if I can speak for Bob, but that's just kind of how he laid it out.
Jake, can you come up and introduce yourself just for the record?
Yeah. I guess I can't speak for the number of lots that he's intending to sell and whether or not he would move forward with or without that number of lots. I do know that his purchase agreement with the school is contingent upon the final plat approval. So it's very possible that if he doesn't get this zone the way he wants and the lot number that he needs, he could walk away.
Thank you.
Yes, next question.
Is it going to be, is there a time restraint? So if we ask him to go back and come back and show us one R1, the lot size, is that going to be an issue to show us and compares, you know, the comparison?
I don't think he'd go for that. Honestly.
Any other questions he doesn't want to answer?
No, I don't have the preliminary in front of me, but the way it's set up now or the lots that come off, is it Rainbow, right? It's Rainbow and Star that needs to be in it too?
No, no, just Parkview.
Parkview.
Parkview and Rainbow.
Yeah.
Rainbow runs right along the park.
Right.
Star is, Star is to the left.
So are the ones that continue off Rainbow a little bigger than like, if they do get smaller? It looks like they get smaller along the north end of things. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. So Rainbow on the east side along the park. You can kind of see those lots are a little bit wider. Those would be walkout lots as well, so they are a little bit more desirable. Probably higher priced, I don't know. So the idea was to make those a little bit larger. Again, it's flexibility of building space is really what the developer hopes to achieve by rezoning to R3.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Sure. Quickly, you have a question?
Oh, yeah. King Hansen, I'm on Parkview, 2030 Parkview. I would have a question for our administrator. He's been in other cities, used in Beatrice. So the way it's zoned, there are R1, we're R4. Is R4, like, what's the norm in a, like, what you would have considered Beatrice to be in the growth part of Beatrice?
There's two questions there that I can unload for you. The first one would be, this area would normally be defined as R1, R2, potentially R3. If you look at the lot size, especially along Star Street, those are significantly small lots, tightly compact. That's the predominant area, I think, that required the R4 that was there. Again, R4 also allows, by permitted use under the R4 now, you could build an apartment up there now without question. We couldn't do anything about it because it's already R4. So that's a very, very dense residential. It doesn't predominantly have that tape. But I would say that R3 or R2, in either case here, is a transitional zoning to that R4, which is what you look for usually in planning and zoning, and Jake can talk to this, is you're looking for transitional zoning as you move from 1 to 2 to 3 to 4. You're looking for something in the middle. Usually, you don't like to a but. This is what happens. You have really big lots, small lots, because you're slamming 1s against 4s. So you try to transition that. And this is a situation where you kind of see transition as the large lots to the east transition to smaller lots closer to Star Street. So that's what we would see predominantly. But out in growth areas, you usually don't see, especially R4. That's, it's just too dense without planning it out for actual apartments for some dense usage. That's what I would see.
So it's pretty important to get the zoning correct on this.
It is.
And so.
Again, where you're looking.
Even if a developer, if they aren't the developer, if they don't want it, I'll guarantee another developer, even if you make those lots bigger here in Seward, you'll have another developer that would take that.
And the zoning is always going to be important because it manages expectations.
Right. So I don't understand why it was R4 on Star Street. What if it was R4? I mean, you weren't here, I get that. I'm just saying, I hope that the zoning gets done right this time for the growth.
I think another consideration you got to undertake in looking at talking with the developer as you go through the process here for subdivision improvement is to ask about covenants to ensure that they won't, they or any subsequent builder they would sell it to won't develop it into multi-unit or anything else that we don't want, but allows them access for the setback adjustments that they get from an R3. That's another option. Again, that can be taken out by the Planning Commission and the council, so.
Star Street, because I was part of that.
Thank you.
Star Street was set up that way to make it more affordable, the house. So I mean, that's why that was raised that way.
It was to access federal funding, because that's correct.
Make it more affordable.
That makes sense. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Other questions?
Yes, Steve?
So as I see it, the norm for this addition wouldn't quite match what is on the north end of Rainbow right now, correct?
I'll let Ed and Jake, I mean, just looking at it in regards to the ones on Rainbow, as you can see, they have larger lots with, I know Ed did some of the middle measurement access in regards to the, when you have those trapezoidal lots, you have to measure them at a certain distance back, and he has a better gauge on how wide those lots actually are.
Correct. The majority of the lots platted, as platted currently, would conform with R1 and R2. From Rainbow curving around, almost all the way to Parkview. So the way they're platted out currently would comply with the R1, not R1, but R2. 65-foot minimum lot width, which is a step down from R1, which is 75-foot minimum lot width.
And then, councilman, I think if you looked at Parkview, and I would have to ask Jake in regards to his plat, but looking at these maps, the legal width looks to be approximately the same for the lot just south of the one on Parkview, and also the one on both sides of Parkview. The most southern ones platted here look to be approximately the same width. Is that accurate, Jake?
Yeah, that's accurate.
So the width of those two lots, which I think are some of the smallest lots in the plat almost, well, they're 72 and 69. I think that one, there's one lot that's 59 on the north end of Rainbow that looks to be a little bit smaller than what is adjacent to it.
And even that 59-foot width is at the very front of the parcel. Our ULDO indicates in the definitions, you actually measure the lot width at the front yard setback line, which would either be the 30 or the 25.
Yeah.
That takes into consideration odd-shaped lots that are narrow up front and wide in the back.
Thanks, Ed. Yes?
So part of this preliminary plat tonight does not include R3 at all, because they tabled that, right, for now?
We're not considering the rezoning tonight.
Okay.
We're just looking at the makeup of this. They did design it with R3 in mind. I mean, I'm not going to tell you they didn't. And then they'll bring back their rezoning to planning and zoning at the beginning of January. And then all the final plat, final agreements, and the rezoning will all come to City Council at the second meeting in January.
So are we not taking any action tonight? Or do we need to approve the preliminary?
You have to approve the preliminary plat. So if you want, now's the time to start making recommendations so it can be incorporated into what will be considered by planning and zoning one more time and then also by this body in January. So if there are things that you want to.
You want them to consider before we get to the final plat? And then the roll. Yes, John?
The Planning Commission, did they act on the preliminary plat?
Yes.
Ed, what was the vote on that, do you recall?
Majority, recommendation for approval.
Majority, okay.
Majority.
Thank you, Ed. John?
I mean, for consideration, I'd still like to see what the lot size would be. I'd really like to have, consider them to bring that back and give us, this is this option, R1, what it currently is, and this is what they're proposing. I mean, I don't think it's going to cost that much. And this way, we could answer it, and we could actually see the size and look at the difference. I think that should be considered.
Are you saying, then, you're asking, you want them to bring back what the development would look like at R1, and then this is at R3?
I agree.
I agree with that.
Kelly?
In the past, the council has voted on preliminaries and finals at the same meeting. So I don't see any real harm if you wanted to table consideration of the preliminary until you have more information in front of you.
I'm good with that.
Can we table it with that request, John's request?
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
So do I need to make a motion on that?
The only thing is, I want to check with, because I know you like to answer questions you can't answer. But we're making assumptions. It's not that we're making assumptions about what their timetable and what they're looking at doing is.
I just wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to go forward with their planning if they don't have their zoning approved yet.
Right.
You know, you guys aren't for sure you want to approve a final plat. You know, you guys aren't for sure you want to approve a final plat with, with this layout, then I don't know that you should be approving the preliminary plat.
I, I just, I just want to make clear because we do do things in sort of a little bit differently in, in the sense that we have, as Kelly said, we've done the preliminary and the final plat at the same meeting. I don't want this discussion for you to think that, okay, this just, this just delayed this process. From our standpoint, when we would bring the final plat to us, we could do the preliminary, which we've done before. So that's not unusual for us. So I didn't want to give that false impression that somehow this delays this process. But with that being said, do you have concerns that you'd like to make us aware of before we proceed?
I guess I do. Um, kind of like I stated, we're, we laid out these lots, um, considering R three, considering setbacks, uh, considering, um, the market into affordable housing, maximizing the building space. Um, with that, we see as, um, the five foot side yard setback and the twenty-five foot front yard setback being the optimum setback that we would like for this development. Um, I'm not sure if changing the layout will accomplish much if our developer is still of the opinion that we would like the five foot side yard setbacks. If it's his property, um, and he wants to plat it, um, I guess, is that up to the City Council or is that up to the developer, you know? Um, if he wants to pursue R three, I, I think that's what we're, what we're gonna end up doing.
I think for purposes of this discussion, um, if I'm hearing John and Al correctly is, is if, if, you're asking for what, R three?
R one.
R one?
I wanted to.
And what you're saying is if that's a non-starter for developer, then I think they should, then the council should probably know that. If that's some, if this, if that's something you're not gonna consider, I think the council should know that before they proceed with this, um, with whether it's a table or, or something else. Um, so that the council doesn't think, okay, we're gonna come back with the map, a different plat and choose a different plat. Because at the end of the day, if it's, they can still do that, but I, I just want to make sure we're all doing this eyes wide open and we're not surprised by.
And, and from the, from the beginning, it starts with our developer. Again, I can't speak for him, but I kind of have to right now. There's a, from the very beginning, he was, uh, very good with the five yard setback and the lot layout that we were able to achieve with the, with the ground.
My biggest thing is, this is a city of Seward, and they need to work with us. And I'm not telling you there's gonna be a no, but I don't want somebody coming in and telling us this is what we're gonna do regardless of the city of Seward or not. We want to work together, but we also want to make sure we're making our citizens that are living there now happy as well. And doing that comparability, you know, those R one to R three, we're giving everybody that choice and that consideration. Um, like I said, I, I don't, I don't see why a developer won't compromise a little bit and say, hey, this, we're gonna answer what your demand is or request is to make sure we're meeting all the needs of everybody.
I guess, what's the, what's the concern with R three?
R three, I don't want somebody to have an ISO in their backyard, possibly later, if the lots don't sell.
Really, to ISO, can you be more specific?
A, a big apartment complex, uh, in the back, somebody's backyard. And, you know, that, that's, you know, the, you know, I say, maybe I'm too much old school, but I want to keep the, uh, look, you know, also in that area and not, I want you to say more commercialize it. I guess is what I'm wondering. In an apartment complex, uh, you're looking more at the commercial. So, I, I'm just asking, you know, that request, I'm not saying we're not gonna approve it. I'm just saying, I, I just, I'm asking that.
But just to clarify, Greg, as far as.
The current zoning over there, it's pretty mu- and we'd have to find what page that was on. Due to the fact that it is R one and R four, somebody could have a giant apartment building in the back of it right now because of the R four that's already located on the middle school property.
Is that true, Ed? Is that R four too?
Yes, our bill is R four.
I didn't think that was.
You have a zoning, copy your zoning map. It goes to the dead end of our, of, uh, Parkview and awaits to the north into school, into middle school property.
You want to show that to Councilman Singleton if you can?
Yeah, I didn't see that was R four.
Parkview is R four.
So they would be, in this request, they would be upgrading the R four to R three to eliminate that dense residential and move it to more of a mixed residential.
So the R four really would be able to be built on the west side?
On Parkview.
Yeah. So right here.
Parkview and the cul-de-sac where it's designed currently.
Okay.
So that's why we just want to make sure if the council wants to make a request that it would be, accomplish what it is you're trying to accomplish. Because if it's to avoid an apartment complex.
Yeah, you're right, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, no, these maps would be confusing.
As Greg mentioned though, the developer and the city could reach an agreement, a subdivision agreement of a covenant prohibiting the multi, the multifamily apartments in the subdivision.
And then that would also buy, bind subsequently notice.
And you can make that binding upon all subsequent developers and landowners.
Still would be.
So we don't know the answer as to whether or not the developer is okay with such a restriction.
Yeah, I, I'm guessing that he would be okay. Um, I don't know, Aspen Builders is, uh, the company that Bob Bennett owns, they build their own houses. You can go online and check out the houses that they build, the kind of house, the standard type houses. So his intent is to not sell off the lot to whoever and have whoever build whatever kind of house. His intent is to sell you the lot and sell you the house and his guy cannot build it. And they do build pretty good house from what I, what I've seen. Um, so I don't know if that helps you determine, you know.
But that conversation can take place between the preliminary plat and the final plat. Not to mention it goes through the planning commission, again, right, Kelly? Or Ed? So there are still processes in place, it's to, to have that conversation.
So Kelly, you're telling me, so then, since it is, even though we would go forward, they would have to get special, use permit to put the apartment complex, is what you're saying?
Right. Currently, you know, and if it was rezoned R three.
Yes.
Okay.
So this body would have to approve that.
Let's say again, hang on, tell you that?
R four, it can go in automatic no questions asked, it's a permitted use in R four.
Okay.
So this actually would give the council more.
Control.
Control over, over your concern, which would be apartment complexes. And that's of course, if there is no covenants, if there's a covenants, and that would also apply.
And the subdivision agreement.
Yes, so there's multiple layers.
Well, I'm more happy with that then. I, I think the citizens over there would be more happy with that too because that gives, you know, so it's not commercialized.
When we say commercial, like you just mean like apartment complexes?
Uh, we do have duplexes, sort of not in, in that Star Street area, but if you go a little bit farther into the newer developments, a little bit to the west, there are some, uh, du- double houses or duplexes. And they seem to fit in okay with, with all the rest of it, but.
You're not going up?
Right, right, so. I just, I had one more question. You mentioned affordable housing. These are all planned, brand new, single family homes. You're not talking about affordable housing or, I guess, define them.
I guess smaller lot is cheaper, that's all, that's the only.
Okay, you're not, okay, okay.
Are you receiving any, for example, government assistance to build these or subsidized? Okay, is, is that what you're getting at?
I think so.
Probably use their own firm there.
No, that's okay, it's just, you know, Seward needs housing, and Seward needs apartment buildings in the right places, and we, we need to, to think about that, that's de- definitely something we need, uh, for all sorts of different reasons. But we want to keep our neighborhoods cohesive, so they, they look nice, you know, so when you're driving through them, it's not all of a sudden this different types of, of housing, so. But I, I'm fine with this, is.
You want well-built starter homes?
Right.
All right.
You know, if, if, if the starting price is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is basically what these new homes in Jonathan will tell you, they say two, because he told me, is, if, if it's two fifty, that's not exactly a starter home in Seward. So two fifty is, is, you know, a definitely a step up home, so.
So with that said, um, are there any other concerns? I mean, we still have the preliminary plat, um, to, uh, to consider, uh, as well as, of course, there'll be future discussions regardless. Are we okay with a motion on preliminary plat, or is there any other concerns you'd like to discuss?
Well, I, I think going to the R three, giving us more control, I think is the right way to go, so.
Okay.
Um, I would go ahead and consider the preliminary.
Would you like to make the motion? To approve the preliminary plat?
Yeah.
We have a motion. We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Welcome back to the personal single in hand.
Thank you. Uh, next we have confirmation of appointment. Uh, number eight, this is the Assistant Fire Chief, the reappointment of Dan Brum to a two-year term. Your motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes. Next, item nine, planning commission, the reappointment of Ron Neiman, Ross Ocheck, and Chris Coram for a three-year term. Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Uh, next, item number ten, discussion and consideration of approval to submit a letter of intent to Nebraska Department of Economic Development to apply for a grant in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the Civic Community Centers Financial Fund for the purpose of collaboration on the Seward County Wellness Center project. Shane Bach is here, did you want to?
Yeah, I can start off with this one. Uh, back in March, I believe, we sent off a letter of intent to apply in the two thousand seventeen grant cycle for what's commonly known as the CCCFF, uh, to look at partnering, to put together the project that we've been considering for a number of year now, years now, which is our wellness center. Um, we sent out that letter of intent and then ultimately discussed it again when I came around back in May and submitted an application in June, uh, for that grant cycle in two thousand seventeen. Uh, it was a very competitive grant in two thousand seventeen, and the city of Seward, uh, in conjunction, uh, with our partners, were unsuccessful in last year's grant cycle. Uh, we did get feedback from DED in regards to that grant and things that we scored very well in, and then what some of the areas we were deficient in. Uh, with, the only area they identified in their letter was just the impact that the Wellness Center would have on visitors to Seward and Seward County. And so with that feedback, I discussed with Shane, uh, the potential, we saw the window opening back up for the two thousand eighteen grant cycle, which this letter is due by, I believe.
January fifteenth.
January fifteenth, and so we wanted to get this in front of you as soon as possible. In the meantime, I did go around to meet with other city entities, including the Civic Center, to discuss their interest in applying for this grant, because one of the specifics about this grant is, if you apply for it and you're successful in getting awarded, no matter what the amount is, you're shut out for five years. So if you go and get a small amount and don't maximize your leverage, you're still shut out for five years. And if the next year somebody comes in and says, hey, we got this huge big project we can get CCCFF dollars for, we're like, sorry, we're stuck for four more years. And so I did go meet with the Civic Center Commission and talk to them about it and potential to look at their ADA accessibility project and other projects, and just checked around the city for any civic organizations that we could partner with on a civic center. The library obviously is doing great right now, had no interest in applying for anything to expand their facilities. And so at the end of the day, ultimately, the Civic Center said, our project's just far too small to tie up these kind of dollars, uh, for five more years. And so we would like to remain independent of grant funding and continue on our process. So the only project that was left, and also gives us the most bang for our buck in, in applying for these grants again in this cycle, is the Wellness Center. And so after speaking with Shane, uh, we wanted to get this in front of you as soon as possible to develop, uh, and get started on the application project success, should you approve putting in letter of intent tonight. And so I'll turn it over to Shane for any other comments or quotes he has, if that's, if I've missed anything.
Shane Bach, one thirty-four Maple Street, Council Mayor, thanks for allowing us to come back again. Um, we really feel like we're on the right track now. It's not due to a lack of trying in the last year. But, uh, honestly, I felt one of the things that hurt us was we didn't have enough money, enough capital tied up, um, in place for them to grant. Um, they really want to be the last dollars coming in and push us over the edge to get in. Um, I feel right now we have a really strong group of people that are involved in this process. Um, we've got people at the table like Concordia Memorial Healthcare, the public school system, the banks, um, the city's there, Greg's there, Carl's been involved in the past as well. Um, and really, I think the motto that we've all come with is we're making one final push, one final hail mary. It either happens or we never talk about this project again. And with the downtown revitalization that's in the works right now, we feel that this could be a huge, huge economic engine for our downtown districts to, to kind of, uh, parlay with what's going on, um, with the downtown revitalization grant that we just received. Uh, we have some more commitments that have come in that we had before. And so I just really feel we are on the right track, we have the right people at the table, um, and hopefully we can push this across the finish line. And we would just appreciate the support from the council. Um, you guys were okay with it, you guys and gals were okay with this a year ago, and, uh, we would, we would love to see that support one more time.
Thank you, Shane. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I would move to consider the, the support for this.
Move for approval?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your vote. Please weigh the votes. Thank you, Shane. Uh, next, item number eleven, consideration of ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with Cattle National Bank and Trust for equipment. Uh, this is Toro Workman and attachments, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Greg?
Yeah, Toro Workman, uh, this is a budgeted item, uh, that we planned on leasing, uh, over a number of years. And we did put this out for bid. Uh, the lease amount is for fifty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-seven. Uh, as you see there on page seventy-three of your packet, uh, it's a five-year term. Uh, we ultimately went with cattle, national bank and trust pursuant to our inquiry on rates. And so, uh, again, this is a, this is a product for the golf course that we've had planned in the budget. And so, uh, administration recommends approval.
Are there any questions or comments on item number eleven?
Move for approval.
We, uh, we have an ordinance, protective use ordinance?
I'll introduce your ordinance.
All right. An ordinance authorizing a lease purchase agreement relating to the purchase of equipment for the use by the city of Seward, Nebraska, authorizing the execution of documents with respect to said lease purchase agreement and providing for the publishing of this ordinance. The ordinance has been read by title, this designated as ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule. Do the motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Do the motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, uh, ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Now, this is the only ordinance we have this evening, so would someone like to make a motion, a final motion, to make the ordinance a part of the permanent record?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Thank you. Item twelve, consideration of city attorney fee agreement effective January one, twenty eighteen. Kelly, you want to update us on, on your status?
Yeah, so, uh, effective January one, I am starting my own law firm. So, uh, this is a proposed engagement, uh, with the exact same terms as we had before with, uh, my current law firm, Mattson Ricketts. Um, I'm starting my own practice January one. Uh, I'm gonna have, uh, an office in Lincoln and also share some office space, uh, here in Seward, uh, at five-ten Seward Street. So, um, I'm still in this practice in the same areas, um, shouldn't change at all, uh, the services I provide to the city.
And just to remind council, we, when our labor attorney, Jerry Pigly, moved over to another firm, we had the same type of, of deal because his engagement letter, it's separate from the appointment, but the engagement letter was all. was also with his firm, and so that's why we needed to clean this up with that move. So that's the purpose of this item. Are there any questions on item twelve? He still has the appointment until my, end of my term, then it is all up for grabs. Any other questions or comments?
Move to, move to per.
We have a motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. All right, thank you. Item thirteen, consideration for approval of two agreements with Southeast Nebraska Development District for the Downtown Revitalization Department of Economic Development Grant. Greg?
Uh, pursuant to our award of the Downtown Revitalization Grant, we need to designate an administrator for that grant, uh, and pursuant to our designation of the administrator outside of the purview of the city, which is SEND, we also need to have a construction management contract. The reason being is, we're gonna have people out doing, um, construction-related activities, as they do facade improvements, painting, repairing windows, whatever else it may be in regards to our downtown improvement work. And pursuant to the federal grant requirements, we're gonna have to go out and do verification of Davis Bacon wages and all kinds of other things with the contractors on site. And so all of that, for this grant, will be handled by SEND, uh, as our designated administrator. And so, uh, this one's gonna be a very administratively heavy, it doesn't cost us anything more than, all the funding for administration comes through the grant, um, but in regards to the administration work, it's gonna be very heavy because the projects will come in and out as they're approved ultimately when we create the program. So they might be on twenty different sites throughout the next two years, verifying wages with different contractors and getting timesheets and all this other stuff that goes on with it. And so, um, we, we really wanna make sure that we get SEND actively involved in this process to know what our program is and get them going immediately. Also, they need to get the special conditions in for the grant, so that we can get release of funds first thing in the spring. And so as soon as we sign this with them, they will get started on the special conditions pursuant to the grant contract with D and B tomorrow, hopefully.
Any questions or comments on either of the items under thirteen? If not, I would do these one at a time, so for thirteen A, that's a professional service agreement for general administration contract for Downtown Revitalization Project, number seventeen DTR dash one oh seven. Is there a motion?
Move.
To approve? Uh, we have a motion in our second.
Sorry.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. And thirteen B, this is professional service agreement for construction management for Downtown Revitalization Project, number seventeen DTR dash one oh seven. Is there a motion for approval?
Move.
All right.
Do the motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Uh, next we have item number fourteen, city administrative report, Greg?
Yeah, just a few highlights that I wanna hit. Uh, we continue on the process of the comp plan update that we're gonna be doing over the next six to seven months. Uh, we'll be doing stakeholder meetings, uh, with individuals that will get to meet one-on-one and in small groups with, uh, RDG. These will be people that weren't identified as on the steering committee, uh, but were recommended by the steering committee. So we're still identifying a few more of those stakeholders, and then in early January, uh, they'll meet individually in small groups with RDG. Another one is, over the last, kinda a quick development, but over the last week or so, uh, Ed and myself have been working on the levy accreditation process as, uh, the Department of Natural Resources for the state of Nebraska goes through and updates the flood maps that they're doing for Seward County right now. Uh, we've reviewed those maps, and in the process of doing that, and we've kinda explained this to you before, to ensure that our levy protects the flood plain that would be filled up if the levy weren't there, we need to have that levy accredited. That's a very specific evaluation process, where you go through and you look at all the things that we've talked about previously, and then based on that evaluation, there may be some construction elements in regard to it, to, you know, raise the free board or other things. Um, and so, we've, uh, got an initial estimate on the evaluation costs for that, that's approximately like a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So due to the nature of that cost, uh, we recognized through J O that other NRDs had partnered with local municipalities to split the costs on levy accreditation in other counties in the same situation. So we went out and Ed met with, and I was on the phone, uh, we met with the upper Big Blue NRD about two weeks ago and told them about our project, what we'd seen other NRDs do, and explained it to them. And their administration was interested in the project, they brought it to their committees just last Thursday, and we went out there along with J O, Mel Aldrich, and also Ted Hughes and Matt Streisand from Hughes Brothers, and we presented in front of their committee, uh, for a proposal to be, do a fifty-fifty match, up to seventy-five thousand dollars of that evaluation cost. Their committee ultimately approved that unanimously to recommend to the NRD, and we will be going up there along with the mayor on Thursday to make that final request to the NRD to try and secure seventy-five thousand dollar match, uh, fifty-fifty match up to seventy-five thousand dollars from the upper Big Blue NRD. So we're very appreciative of their consideration in that, and quick turnaround. Um, and their match will come in the summer, cause they're gonna set it off into their next fiscal year, which begins July first. So we'll be doing that on Thursday. Um, and then the last one is, is we're just in the thick of the audit now, we had auditors in the office, uh, at City Hall, uh, early last week, and, and we're continuing in that process, so hopefully we'll get that wrapped up and, uh, get that information out to you. But, uh, any other questions in regards to city administrative report?
Anything else, Greg?
Um, that's it. One of the other things, uh, and I was gonna bring it up for a future request, but, um, is that in regards to the Downtown Revitalization, uh, Jonathan and I, along with working with the mayor, have a general idea and proposal we'd like to bring in to you soon, because of all of our special conditions need to be done by February, when you get rolling on putting the pro- the program together. And so, uh, we're looking at potentially, um, on that first meeting in January second then, uh, after my conversations with some other people, and bringing that proposal to you. And so we're gonna send that out ahead of time, so you can start perusing over it, and we base it off some of the ideas we found, uh, out at other communities and working with DED. Uh, but be ready on January second to discuss that, because we'll probably need a final one approved, um, either, probably that second meeting in January. And so we're gonna be working really hard over the holidays, uh, and getting that ready for you. But we have a quick turnaround on it, so.
Any other questions or comments for Greg? I entertain a motion to accept a city administrative report.
Sir.
Motion in a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. All right, uh, next is, we have future requests for council agenda items or administrative action. Yes, Ellen?
I've had a, a couple of business, people ask about knowing property and, uh, for an update on that, it's concerned. And, you know, a year almost into it and, and nothing's happened.
And we'll, yes, we will have a report for you. Um, any, anyone else? Uh, then next we have announcement of upcoming events. Jonathan, would you, would you come up?
Yes.
Please.
Thanks, Mayor.
You wanna talk about upcoming events first?
Yes, that'd be great. Uh, so two upcoming events, uh, for your consideration, we have our annual meeting extravaganza on January twenty-second. That'll be at Harvest Hall on Fairgrounds, would encourage your consideration to, to attend, to represent, uh, the city. We appreciate the participation and, uh, support that you've given us in the past from that event. Uh, really should be an excellent evening. And then secondly, we have a new event, which is actually kind of a riff on a, an existing event. Uh, we've partnered with the Salt Dogs for the last two years, we've decided to give that partnership a rest, at least for this year, and actually, I consider partnering with the Lincoln Stars instead. Uh, and the consideration is to work with them, um, to do a similar agreement like we had with the Salt Dogs, where they come play here, and then we go to, to their facilities. And so, the idea right now, we, we've had Harvest Hall approved to play indoors, if we are able to do indoors. What we'd like to do is actually, uh, and this will be coming to the council at, at your next meeting for consideration to potentially use the city pond, actually play an inner squad exhibition on the, on the city pond at the fairgrounds. Had a nice, uh, meeting with the Seward County Ag Society last night, uh, to get their approval on various things as that would impact, uh, obviously, usage of the fairgrounds facilities. And they were, they were supportive of what we're trying to do, of course, with a special, uh, use per, or special use, uh, insurance for, or special event insurance for, for this particular event, but, but the hope is to partner, uh, with the Lincoln Stars for a similar event like we've held with, uh, the Lincoln Salt Dog in the past. And that is proposed for Sunday, uh, February fourth, that's Super Bowl, Super Bowl Sunday. We have the, of course, the big Seward Showcase Basketball Tournament in town, you know, five thousand-ish people with a hundred and sixty teams. So the hope is that you're, um, trying to encourage families to spend more time, uh, here in, in Seward after that event is completed, and so we'll be bringing that formal request, uh, for potential usage of the city pond, uh, at the next council meeting.
Thank you Jonathan.
Thanks.
Uh, that's all we have for upcoming events. Uh, next, is, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Do the motion in a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. All right, thank you everybody, have a good evening.